Let's say they say, okay, pair up for this whatever and I turn around and I engage.
That's great.
So that's given us a little bit of help because they have determined that as long as the student is remaining facing forward and the same on the bus, if they're staying, remaining forward, controlling this in front of them. Now, we had the case, and I can't get too specific, but where a kid did for most of the trip home in case of the person behind him, different story. They were, they were, when we looked at the films, and we do, we look at the films, especially on the bus, because right now, some kids get on, some kids don't, you have to continually look where people are sitting. But yes, that was an adjustment that helped problem.
That's great, that's great. And that's where I think, you know, considering like you shared the data that so far, none of these districts have, we want our students healthy, and if we were having a lot of our quarantine students come back positive, that would be telling us that our masks are not working with social distancing, but clearly, that is working, but we have to follow those guidelines which we want, and we need to do that. But I think that like Lebanon was doing, if they're in small groups, they separate at like 10 to 12 minutes and just take a break, and that way, there's never going to be a time that, that they're going to be together for 15 minutes if their desks are far enough apart, and that's where it's not really playing a system. It's, it's setting kids up for success. Are we doing that?
Well, let's see, I think I sent how many emails now about doing that?
I think that's great. I don't, I don't think that's-
You just have to think, think about it, it's a different way of thinking a little bit, especially when you get any younger kids, you know, you've got to be able to get up and move, get up and move every 10 to 12 minutes is what, what we try to do. And, and you know, I think there are kids that are starting to do that, older kids probably are setting their timers, to be perfectly honest, if they're smart, you know.
Well, that's the thing where you keep there being pull-ups or-
You just kind of, you're a pencil. Do something like, yes, we encourage teachers to, to frequently move around and move, move kids, and that way, you know, you're not just continuing in somebody's space.
I think if we start seeing positive numbers going up, then that's telling us there's, that clearly is not working, but right now, all the numbers are showing us that the kids are not getting at school, it's being spread like on athletic teams and things like that, but it's not in the classroom. I appreciate the communication, I think that's come out quickly, and I think that's been super helpful, and also the year weekly, having the quarantine has been very helpful, the new graphic that you have has been helpful, so appreciate that. My last question was on remote. I was, I do think that the high school, I know last week I was asking, or last board meeting, I was asking like when the videos would be dropped, and there was a lot of questions about that, that really seems to have normalized from the people that I've talked to, that I think that they're kind of into their rhythm, just like what we were, Kyle was talking about. The only thing I'm hearing is there's kids getting kicked out quite consistently still. Have we worked through what those, like, there was some concern, was it a Chromebook thing, was it a computer thing, like, what are we doing to help? Because I'm still hearing that some issues.
I've not heard any, I don't know if you've heard anything about that today or-
Yeah, we've addressed individual families, either through our ed tech department or our technology departments. One of the things we're finding is that a lot of Chromebooks that, that are home Chromebooks, even ones that are just purchased within the last month, do not have the latest version of Chrome on them. So they're, they're causing a lot of stoppage and video interruption. Another thing that we found is when a teacher tries to run the video, him or herself, during the meet, as opposed to posting it, having the student watch it, and then coming back to the meet, that's causing some problems. So we're troubleshooting them on an individual basis, as teachers are informing us, we either have Amy, Cheryl, or Garrett working with those families to try to troubleshoot, but the biggest issue that we're seeing is old versions of Chrome on Chromebooks, even if the Chromebook is a brand-new Chromebook. So we've got a listing, a troubleshooting listing that we're sending out as people are contacting us with their issues.
Questions or comments for the board? Questions or comments?
I'd like to respond, I have some concerns about-
Sorry, can you state your name?
No, sorry, my name's Heather Bauer, I'm at 9248, my name's Emily. I sent an email to Principal Concerns About, and all I got back was, we're working on it. I would love to have that information, that maybe if I should update it from over.
Drop me an email tonight, eightclique springborough.org, and I will get you in touch with somebody that can walk you through some steps to try to trouble you.
Is there a way to just send a mass email? Because I'm seeing that same issue for many, many families on the virtual Facebook pages, and no one seems to have gotten any information about it, so maybe if the teacher doesn't report it to you, maybe it's a much larger number. Like, we've had a technician come to the house, we switched to the wifi to mesh, we updated Chromebooks, we did everything under the sun, and they're getting kicked out of class an average of five to ten times per meet, and no one has given us that information.
I can have that put into the principal's updates if you think that would be a more effective way, but we are happy to help families individually if that is, if we know who they are.
Okay.
That would be very, very helpful, so people know to reach out to you. We'll get that email here.
Kendra Cunningham, 8050 with Bridge Court. I would like to switch gears to what you, the comments you mentioned about the diversity and inclusion committee. Although I understand that there are measures being taken, and it's a very new idea to combine the efforts that Peacock has been working on, the board of the district, I think I really just want to impress upon you that that board needs to include more than white males, white people in this community, and straight people in this community, because a lot of times, white people in our community try to make decisions on how to be more diverse and inclusive, when obviously, that's not working, especially given what's happened just today in our community. We have students, you want to talk about the mental health and the whole, we have students in this community that could commit suicide because they are being bullied, and we do not have a plan for diversity and inclusion outside of taking straight white males and having them in a fight. And I don't think it's working, it hasn't worked the entire time of history. I mean, it's really, really important that other families are included on that board, and not just one person from Peacock, not just one person from the mayor's board, it needs to be a truly diverse committee, and I think it's really, really important that that happens, because if not, we will not have any change.
I appreciate you sharing, obviously, I didn't go into the exact names, but just to clarify and assure you that it will not be made up of, I'm sorry, white males, as you were saying there, again, I don't have all of the names, sort of specifically, but again, it, we thought we were putting together here, sorry, I'm just trying to find the-
Well, just for example, we are both in Peacock, we have not heard of any, any meeting. He's one of the founders of Peacock, this is the first we're hearing about it.
I just had a conversation actually with Lena earlier today, so again, I don't know what communication has, has made its way, brought it, but we do have names, again, from representatives from Peacock who do not fit the description that you described, from the mayor's advisory board, that are not part of that description, you know, our building administrators, the central office administrators, I can assure you that it will be a diverse committee, and that our intent is to draw from all of those diverse voices as that committee is being formed. So I appreciate your comments.
I'm sure that you guys haven't heard this before. I've heard this before, time and time again, and my child has been a victim in this school, where my son's in the third grade, and he has been called outside of his name because he is of a different color, simply because he's of a different color, because he do not have any type of equity in this community. The amount of time I have talked to parents just today who are pulling their children out of school, out of these schools, out of Spring Grove schools, because of the things that are happening in our school, children that are called the N-word, children that are called the F-word, which I hope that you guys are aware about, children who are saying, well, you're just too sensitive, it's just because you're a snowflake, it's because even if you have a board, it doesn't matter, those ideas are not trickled down into our school.
I think we all understand that, and that's why we're taking the action beyond just simply putting the statement out there, saying words, we're forming a committee, again, that the committee will draw from the diverse group of people to hear about those experiences. If we weren't committed to this, we wouldn't be investing time, to be creating that committee to address those very things, and looking at things like our hiring practices, looking at education for our staff, looking at education for our students, looking at ensuring that your diversity in our curriculum, all of those things. And I can't speak to the experience that you've had with other people, I can only speak for myself, but to my knowledge, since I've served on the board, we've not had this conversation, we've not done this in terms of taking this action to drive, drive some accountability. When we met back in March, and sort of this idea, you know, started to, to be discussed, you know, I think all of us, I won't speak for my other board members, but all of us agreed that we recognize we have issues, and that the time for just simply offering words was over, and that we needed to take steps to really actively, very practical ways, address these things that are happening in our district, and this is the start of that, and a direct result of that, and so, again, while I appreciate, you know, there may have been other conversations you've had, and it feels like lip service, I can assure you, at least from where I'm sitting, that that's not the case, and that's the intent of putting this in place, and again, as I shared earlier, it was heartbreaking to hear from these parents that I've been speaking with about the experiences that their children have endured in our district, and, you know, while it may be overdue, I'm encouraged that we're doing this, and that we're, we're taking an active role to do more than just simply, you know, release a statement and move on. So I appreciate your comments, and again, I can assure you that when it is time, you know, for, for this committee to be formed, it will represent a diverse cross-section of our, our student community, and our, our staff, our administrators, and members of the community, because again, I really, I think this board is committed to moving beyond just offering words, so.
And I think you're right, and I think we as the five board members, we're not going to fix this, we can, we can lay a framework, and we can develop something, but at the end of the day, the solution lies out there, so I, you know, I would encourage you, as we get this thing on the road, ready to go, volunteer, be, be there at those meetings, let your voice be heard. I mean, that's, parent volunteerism, that's how this is going to be solved, so I would-
I'm aware of that, but aren't your white parents aware of that? If I'm here, I mean, I don't know, you don't have to tell me how to fix this, I'm the victim.
Hold on here, hold on.
Like, I know how to fix it.
But you just said, it's, it's not going to be solved by white males.
It's also not going to be solved by black people, it has to be solved by-
White women, or, that's what I'm saying, it's all of us, so we need your participation. I mean, again, this committee is not going to do anything if we don't get community participation, so I, I appreciate people coming to the board meeting, expressing their ideas, but this is the start, this is not the end, you know?
Until today, this is the first time you've had another, kind of, there's nowhere else for us to go, nowhere else for us to go, so-
You can email the Board of Education 24-7.
I have, I have. I have emailed the Board of Education, I've emailed Mr. Hook, in particular, regarding the fact that just now, there is a petition out that says we should reverse the suspension, because it's just a joke. So I think that telling-
There's petitions out there for everything, though, I mean, that's not, that's not going to be a serious-
So you don't, so you don't think it's a problem that as of right now, 163 students in this district have signed a petition saying that it's just, it left comments saying it's just a joke, you shouldn't be hitting boys if you don't want to be labeled as a disparaged-
I can't, I'm not going to speak for any of those students, I'm not-
No, not you, do you believe that's a problem?
No, I believe that's a problem, but at the same time, I think it's work for us to solve this, to move forward with this committee, and to have public participation, I mean, that's what I'm asking for. I'm not, I'm not asking anything besides come to these meetings to help us, I'm asking for help.
Mr. Benjamin?
Stephanie Benjamin, 35, Frank Court, I'm glad to put a face to a name, because I've been seeing a lot of stuff that you've been putting out. Hey, guys, change.org, it says it's done by the Spring, Spring Grove Football Team. We got a problem. We have a big problem, and you need to look at it, you need to go on change.org, and you need to look at the comments, because you are going to be, I, I hope you're shocked. I am shocked, but I am a raging liberal in a conservative basket, but this is crazy, we got high schoolers on here using their whole name saying stuff. We have a problem, and it's not, you're going, we need to train people, we need to talk about this, and I don't think it's happening, and, you know, this is just coming out, but please, go look at change.org and answer to me why the, why it says petition done by Spring Grove Football Team, big foul for our school.
I'm going to assume that, I don't use change.org, but I'm going to assume that anybody-
You should. You need to see what, you need to see what our students are saying.
My point is, I'm assuming that anybody can go on there and put Spring Grove Football Team, I'm assuming.
Oh, and they can, but I'm saying, we've got 158 or 200 people saying really bad things about homosexuals.
Okay, I, I-
Crazy.
I'm not going to sit here and defend that, but my point is, we keep talking about we need to do something, I agree, we need to do something, and what we're proposing is at least a start, is this committee, so again, please participate, I, I wholeheartedly agree.
I just think it shouldn't be, the word shouldn't get out there, because it's not needs by a parent here that comes to the board meetings that are not participating, it's the ones that are sitting at their petition tables, saying the negative hateful things that they have been shouting for their entire kids, their kids' entire life, which they can believe that it's okay, in the 10th grade, to say those things publicly with no fear for pride, though, which is why their name, they don't mind putting their entire name out there. I would never, I mean, you would think that at least pretend to be someone else, they don't care, they'll just go out there, first name, last name, because they have no fear, because they've been made to believe their entire lives that it's okay, because we have systemic issues in our community and in our school, and we are here, so it's not like, I understand what you're saying, public participation and parent participation, but I'm here, so I'm not the parent that you're trying to reach to convince to participate, it needs to be, to parents, things like this, diversity and inclusion communities need to be wide, widely disseminated through our communities, so that they know that we are making active changes, and also, that there will be sweeping, sweeping changes and consequences for hateful, jaded speech. I mean, I think it's completely ridiculous that they can go on and feel comfortable putting that this is by the Spring Grove Football Team, and although I understand, I saw the statement, I saw the apology, I do not believe for one second that the Spring Grove Football Team has sanctioned this. However, everyone else who has seen it has no idea that it's not something that's sanctioned by the Spring Grove Football Team, so it leads you to believe that it's something we have signed on with, and said, you know what, Spring Grove, co-sign this, that's okay. I don't believe that. I believe what you're saying, but if it just goes on there and says, Spring Grove Football Team, reverse it because blah, 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 that's what, that's what people are saying, that's what people are saying, and I think that it's important that we pay attention to the legacy that Spring Grove High School, Spring Grove Community School is going to have, the reputation that we're going to have in our community. I don't want to, being completely transparent, had I known a year ago what I know now, I would not have spent $800,000 on a house here, I would not have moved my kids here, because my kids have more, we have lived all over the world, not the country, the world, and we have not experienced anything like we've experienced here, ever, and the lack of care from administration, the lack of action on the part of the administration for the district, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make me feel good, it doesn't make me feel like I want to continue to put my children through the school. I have had great success with my personal school administrator, why? Because I am loud, and I am an advocate for my children. There are other people who are not like me, who don't have the not care that I have, that just pull their kids up, that just run, that have to put their kids in counseling and on 504 plans because they have been bullied, or because they don't feel safe. Everyone's not like me, so everyone doesn't come to the meeting and open their mouth, and we'll get into conversations and discussions about it, but I'm telling you, from the people who have come to me, because I am loud, and I am posting online, I've never met three of these people here today, but they know exactly who I am, because as you say, I need to participate, trust and believe I have. So everyone is not like me, and there are a lot of people with very similar issues, if not worse issues than I have, and I think it's important that we really, really pay attention to that, because that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying that the, that the committee is lip service, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm saying that we really need to pay attention, not just say we have a problem, not just form a committee, we have to really do something. It is scary to think what these kids are going through, and how many of them go home, and if that's what they're telling their parents, imagine what they're not telling their parents.
Appreciate your comments, I just also wanted to try to distinction that we're not going to solve this, and this isn't that committee, and I appreciate your sharing, and I, I think these are-
But you guys seem very surprised about what's happening.
I'm not, I'm not upset, I'm surprised, I'm offering that this is the Board of Education meeting, I appreciate you sharing your comments, I wholeheartedly agree that these issues need to be tackled, but I'm saying this particular work session item, this forum, is not the way to have that, that dialogue on all of those specific points that you raised, that's all I'm suggesting, but I appreciate your concern and your passion, and, and, and again, I stress that I think there is a recognition that we need to do more, and I'm just suggesting that this particular forum, at this particular moment, is not the time to huddle, that we will have those, those conversations and talk about putting that in action, so I appreciate you.
So that's how we move forward.
I have other, I mean, we, we have other individuals that are, that are looking to, we have a young lady in the back that has been holding her hand up for, for quite some time.
Hi, my name is Sahabi, my name is Sahabi Solomon-Ratek, I live at 8066, County Rip Court, I'm a 2019 graduate of Spring Grove, I currently attend Ohio State, I'm in my second year studying public health with a specialization in sociology. Thank you all for your time, Board of Education, everybody who's here, and thank you for speaking out on behalf of the students of color, this is for the black students in Spring Grove, there were few in part between, and we go through a lot with you. My voice is shaking because I'm not a very good public speaker, but I'm doing my best. I am not a rich dog on the school board, you guys are all white, struggling because of your race is not something that you are familiar with, it's not something that has systemically hurt you in your life, so I understand that this is probably uncomfortable to talk about, it requires you to reflect back on the choices that you've made in your life, and the privileges that you have as a white person, mostly white men with Mrs. Baff as a white woman, so I understand, and I'm appreciative of the change that I'm hearing that you guys are willing to make in the future. I really wish it had been made earlier, as a student, I could call the Edward Polley, been told that I'm not black because I live in Spring Grove, which, I didn't know if Spring Grove changed this, it doesn't, but I reckon that there's going to be changes in the future, and that this will finally happen, because I know from my experience, my experience with people that have been here before me, and my sister, who's currently a junior, that this is ongoing. My sister was a victim of a hate crime on Christmas Day of 2019, a federal hate crime, and for the little punishment that was doled out, that wasn't really adequate, it happened to be punished right before the school shut down because of COVID, and her suspension was pretty much just staying at home. So there is a serious issue within the district, where the kids feel that they can do this stuff without reproach, without punishment, without consequences, and it is killing the students that attend the school, it is killing them. It has hurt me in ways that I can't even begin to explain, where I would, I literally counted down the days from my sophomore year to when I would be able to move out of Spring Grove, because of the pain that I endured, and I'm not saying it's because of the 50, at all, I'm not saying that. I was actually friends with Mrs. Baff's son, but he ran a graduating a year before I did.
We won't say.
So it's not your fault, but I, I think that there needs to be a point where the school board, the people that are in the most high positions of power in the district, come out and formally say that racism, homophobia, sexism, discrimination has no place here, because when we dance around what's happening, and make individual people, like the Spring Grove Football Team, come out and say something, or the high school themselves, they say something, but that isn't five points, continue on, it is just addressing the individual scenario. If these individual situations are happening within one school, imagine how they're happening in other parts of the district. So when you can stop this type of behavior, this type of thinking of a certain group is superior to others, women in first, and second, and third grade, imagine how well the children in this district will prosper, imagine. You think you're raising doctors and lawyers now? Imagine what's going to happen in 10 years, when the kids that were stopping from saying these slurs, when they're graduating and they're in the marks of the professional world. But it is, it is a fact that white students have an advantage over the students of color, even when they perform at the same level. And I'm going to tell you, my friends in high school, mostly white, the few friends of color that I did have, because there weren't a lot to pick, a lot to pick from, they're incredibly intelligent, national merit scholars, national merit scholars, they've gone to Ohio State to pick a major where only 25 people are admitted, they've gone to the University of Alabama, where they have too much scholarship money, that they're thinking about picking up a second major, because they don't know what to do with all of it. So then, if you stop and think, how can we support these students, which is what we should be doing as advocates for education, if you stop and think about it, imagine how much better the world will be if we, Spring Grove can do something right now. I know it's not going to be fixed tomorrow, or within the next week, but I would love to hear concrete plans about how we're going to do better, because we've got to do better, we're doing a disservice. You are advocates for education, you have to make it an equal playing field, if that's what you can. Education sets up a person for their life, for their life, so please, come out and say, at Spring Grove, we do not, we do not support racism, sexism, any of the isms, it needs to go to every parent, every household that is a member of the Spring Grove School District, because everybody needs to know, it needs to be clear, there needs to be a firm understanding about what goes on in this district, and whoever made that petition, I don't know what kind of tech capability Spring Grove has, but whoever needs to, whoever made it needs to be discovered and suspended, because that is ludicrous. And I agree with whoever made the statement about, it looks like it's from Spring Grove Schools, from Spring Grove Football, even though I know it's not, because I could go in and say, I'm Tom Cruise, I'm not Tom Cruise, so if, if something needs to happen, like immediately, by Monday, because it is exhausting to be treated like you're less than, enter the school to watch you suffer and not do anything about it. Thank you.
Ken Williams, 205, Frank, John, Mr. Good, Stan, Larry Hook, how you doing?
I still have a face with the name. Nice to visit you.
So I just want to read an excerpt that I got, and I know we've been-
And I know we've been, this is a lot of emotion that's coming out. And so I appreciate you guys being patient, number one. A lot of people express their feelings. You've got graduates of Spring Grove speaking. You've got parents and kids that have gone through Spring Grove. You've got parents and kids coming in through Spring Grove. So I want to pose one question. For everyone except for Lisa Bath. Just think about it. What is the most marginalized group in the United States right now? Lisa over. Can anyone give me the answer? As the superintendent of schools, as a school board, school board president, can you give me the answer?
I mean, the Americans?
No. Close, but. So I'll answer it for you. And this is not to put you on the spot. I don't want you to feel as if you're being put on the spot. But this is what I say, while you have, I hope, good intentions, the research needs to come and the due diligence comes from you guys as a school board. The number one marginalized group in the United States and in public schools is transgender black women, females, ladies. Second group, black women. Third group, black men. Fourth group, women. Just the information for you. So when I go to speak in regards to what needs to be done, you guys keep speaking, Jamie, of diversity and inclusion. Do you know that diversity and inclusion does not happen without equity? Does any of you know that?
Yeah.
Can I get a certification in our equity policy? I've seen the equity policy, but we're still saying diversity and inclusion. I'm an expert in diversity and inclusion. But I also know that equity is number one. You cannot have diversity and inclusion without equity. So, but you guys speak to it, you don't understand it. And I don't blame anyone. You only know what you know. So I'm being as transparent as I can. When I say, if you look at the school board for the last several years, do you guys recall any person of color staying on this school? Any hands? How many teachers have you had of color in Spring Grove in the last ten years? Any, anybody know the answer? Two, two?
Two or three.
Two or three, maybe, right? Maybe in the last ten years. How long have you guys been on board? Who's got the longest term on board here?
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson? Can you tell me what the demographic, your makeup is for school, BIPOC in your community? In your school community for the last ten years? Because I've been here since oh five. I'm sorry?
The schools?
Your school community.
For now, for not only white.
No, I'm asking, can you tell me the number, the percentage of BIPOC community within your school?
Sir, we're not going to play. Gotcha, Karen.
No. This is, my point to you, Dan, is that the due diligence needs to come on your behalf.
Sir, what do you mean by due diligence?
If you don't know what you have, how are you going to, how are you going to integrate diversity and inclusion in this system if you don't even know?
We do know, but.
Well, I just asked you three questions.
No, sir, he doesn't have them memorized. Come on, we can pull those statistics, we have the data, but to come up and stand up and start quizzing people.
I'm not quizzing you. I said it's not to put you on the spot. I want to know exactly.
Sir, you put Mr. Anderson on the spot. You asked.
I'm asking collectively, and I specifically said this is not to put you on the spot. This is specifically.
But then you went ahead and asked the question anyway.
I asked the question because I want to see who knows. That's where equity comes in.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying, you don't understand what equity is because you're getting defensive or something.
You brought up the makeup of the school board. None of us can apologize for who we are.
I'm not asking you to apologize. You're asking me to do the due diligence. I have the information you need to know about the community that you serve.
Sir, I live in this community, every one of you.
I know you live in this community. My son is sitting by your lawn, you know, even remembering my name, do you?
I don't even point forward.
So at the end of the day, please take into consideration what I'm saying. This is not a bash against you. You got kids like this? You talking about Peacock? Her father and I are what, are two of the biggest fathers with Peacock right now.
Here's, here's what, here's what I'll, we've got a lot of work.
I agree one hundred percent. Again, let me, if, if you feel as if I was, if I was trying to bash with which I'm saying, that was not it at all. So let me apologize formally for the record.
Well, you did, but that's okay. We got a lot of work. So, and I think that's pretty evident. And, and somebody said, well, you're, you're not surprised. Well, quite honestly, somewhat, I am surprised. I mean, my kids graduated from Spring Grove High School. Yeah, I, I, I appreciate everything that you, that's been said. We're not going to, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to push through this in the next, can I?
No, I agree one hundred percent.
But it has served to Dan's point and to Jamie's point as a, as a great starting point. I know it's influenced me. I'm seventy years old. I'm the oldest one up here, so, and, and so we got to get started, we got a lot of work to do. But, but it's, it's not, it's not going to do any good to, to, to just.
These are just, sir, let me, let me express, these are not the bash for, these are questions for you to take home and think about. To, to sit home for two or three days and say, I thought he was trying to bash me, but no, he was trying to get me to think.
If you want to, if you want to give me questions to go and think about, you email any of those questions and I'll retain those a lot better than we will.
Sir, I have six questions to this school board. I, I, I've been teaching.
I've seen your emails.
So.
Sir, I, I appreciate.
The quickest response that I've ever got from the school board, and it probably hasn't been the school board, is I get calls and phone calls from Mr. Hook, so I appreciate that following, it's immediate following. If you can't give me the answer, you find the answer.
So can I make a recommendation? So I'm part of Peacock because I have a son that is black. And I have heard the desire of Peacock and I hear the heart of Peacock. I feel it myself because I live it with my son. I also feel like I know the desire of the board. I don't feel like they feel it the same because they don't, they haven't lived it themselves. But I want to caution us that, that it can't be constantly that, that, that's, if it's going to constantly be like this, that they've not done enough here, here, and here, we're never going to get anywhere. And I think that in order for us to move forward, we've got a committee, and with committees you can't have the masses because you'll never get anywhere. But where, Dan, you were encouraging Kendra to get involved, but if we have a smaller committee, I feel like we need to have as the committee, we need to have some open communication that is open to the community, that where there can have, we can have conversations. And it's not just the people on the committee, but we're really here because I get it, you guys, I don't get it like you get it, because I'm not a black person living in a white community. But I get it in a, in a secondary measure and I want to hear your voices because I think that when we hear it directly from you, we understand it differently. And when we hear what would be helpful for us to do differently within the district, that's when we can actually make change. We get it. We're, we've not nailed this. We have not. But please let us recognize that and take the steps that are necessary. And part of those steps, it's not just putting together the committee of sixteen or twenty people. It's then using that committee to engage and to open it up and to get Peacock and beyond, because there's a lot more people that have joined us at Peacock that need to be part of this. They need to share what their experiences have been. And like Sahabi, you've gone through the high school here. Pull in other people and have them share with us. If they're away at college, have them email you what can be done so that we can make it a better experience. Because that's what real change is. So know that we get it, that it's not where it should be. But if we just focus on that, we're not going to move forward. So I just feel like we need to, Dan, when you were saying, be, you know, volunteer, be part, Kendra isn't very involved, but she needs to have, if she's not part of the committee, then these people aren't going to have a place. And then we're going to have this conversation over here and it's almost like it's going to be working against. And that's what I don't want to have happen, because I feel like it's two great groups that want to make change.
And I agree. And again, I want to apologize to everyone if you think I'm pointing you out, trying to put you on the spot. That is not it. And I'm going to say it again, these are questions that I want collectively for everyone to think, not just the board, everyone to think about those questions. And when you go home after you're unheeded and you think about it, you may, you may think, maybe he's right, maybe I should be looking at this so I can speak to those things. You guys have to be advocates for those kids. We can be advocates, but you guys sit on the board. I'm not pointing fingers at you and saying it's all your fault. You only know what you know. And I'm going to leave it at that because I'm taking up too much of your time. You guys get the message. I understand that. But I wanted to plant some seeds for you to think. And I want to end on this note. So when I have a friend of mine's daughter, who's new to this community, and I've been here since oh five, so I love the process of circulation, I've pushed for change, but I couldn't do it by myself. When I, when I hear that she writes in an essay that she feels less than a human, less than a human when she's in school, imagine your children coming to you and saying that. I'm going to leave it at that. I thank you guys for your time. Mr. Belcher, if you'll keep me in the loop, Ken Williams, in regards to the upcoming committee meetings, I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing to add. I'm not going to take too much of your time. I'm sure this is stressful. But I, like how Mrs. Bath said, again, I'm studying public health, specializing in sociology, so the stuff is like right up my alley and it's very interesting to me. I'm kind of a weirdo who goes with the stuff for free time. So, you know, the onus is on you guys to kind of start with this, but I would love to help out in any way that I can. I'm here this semester and next, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it. But I would be happy to help. I've got tons of resources here, you know, like for my own studies and out of Ohio State. A lot of my friends and professors are experts in their fields and they would love to help make a change in this, you know, little community that we live in. I think that it would be a great experience for me selfishly. I would love to do this and I would be able to help and give back to the community that I grew up in. And that gave a lot to me. You know, I'm very grateful for the education that I received at Spring Grove, step me up to do fantastic at Ohio State. So, you know, the things that happened, they're not going to discredit the fantastic education that I got. The great work that you guys have done, you know, thus far to keep the education, you know, at a, like a blue ribbon level, or I don't know the specific word, but you know, rigorous. So however I can help, I would be happy to do that. I'm not as much involved with Peacock as everybody else, but I would be happy to assist in any other manner. So yes, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Public comments, questions, I have three point four. To everyone. Now to Mrs. Stacy, the Treasures. If you want to go with your items, thank you.
I have four point one, approval for the FY twenty-one permanent appropriation. We have approved the temporary incorporation in June, so now we're ready to finalize the funding due to the HOD by October first. And then I have four point two, is approval of a donation of one thousand three hundred and forty dollars from the Norman Foundation to be used towards the athletic program.
Is there a motion to approve items four point one and four point two?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stiki?
Abstain.
Balaji?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I have a few other donations here. Approval of a donation of five hundred dollars from Christ United Methodist Church South to fund the yearly supply and build needed for the breakfast program at the elementary. Item four point five, approval of a donation of fifteen hundred dollars from Northwood Crewman to be used toward robotics program. And then item four point six, approval of the donation to Dennis, who has figured out equipment value at one thousand thirteen dollars in fourth sense. And you can see there's a large list of donors, those will all be added to the plan.
So item four point seven seeks the approval of items four point four to four point six. Is there a motion to approve? Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes. Yes.
Stacy? Superintendent Hook with two items?
Yes, the five point one, the second reading for our policy. And I believe we're setting on this.
Is there a motion to approve item five point one, which is the second reading of the updates to policy two two six six on non-discrimination on the basis of sex in district programs or activities? Is there a motion to approve? Submit.
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Item five point two, I think is a first reading of a policy.
Correct. This is the attendance policy had to be adjusted. Our attorneys have given that, there's also a red line piece in it, had to have inclusion of new laws, basically as a response to the COVID, how that's being, and it's also pretty set standard through the county, pretty, all the county schools can be the same one. But it also includes attendance for Model B students as well, so it's a first reading.
Questions or discussion?
Yeah, I get, so section F, is this, is this like the county language or is this something we drafted or you know, or?
This is drafted from the county.
Okay, because I, the first paragraph just doesn't seem to match up with the second paragraph, maybe I'm just.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, it probably just needs awkwardly worded because it talks about what medical excuses don't count in the first, and then it says medically excused absences occur. And it just, it's either awkwardly worded or it just, it probably just leaves another set of eyes on it. So I realize this is the first reading, but just struck me as I couldn't quite figure out what it meant.
So if a student, just so I can speak it out loud, if a student is quarantined but doing school remotely with whatever the teacher's telling him to do, are they considered absent? Excused absent?
Wouldn't we move, no, because then we move them to the Model B, so they will attend, therefore not impact their attendance.
Okay.
Excessive attend, attendance in the, in the school setting, there's a point, without getting way into the weeds with it, there's a point where excuse, medical excuses don't, even if it's a medical excuse, it does to a certain level, it's, it still requires intervention. Sometimes that may be where the confusion is.
Again.
I want to say what, what is the extent, it changes all the time. I'm trying to think if it's, it's, it's so many absences within a certain range of time, and I'll bring that in for you, so that, and that's kind of what the course uses.
Good move now to Ms. Hester, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I present to you item six point one, which is the personnel report for September.
Is there a motion to approve item six point one? Discussion or questions?
My only question is resignation of two bus drivers. That's super concerning. How are we doing with that? Did we?
We are on a very thin line. We have three, we can cover three absentee routes with our mechanics and then Kathy. So we're getting it done, but we did have, we are approving one, so that's kind of the wash there.
Okay.
Is anybody willing to receive you?
Absolutely.
And you will see in next month's personnel report, a lot of adjustments to the routes because they're running them now. And then after three to four weeks, they'll figure out who's really on the bus, who isn't, so their route times will change. So I don't want you to get alarmed that there's a lot of bus driver movement. That's just what we do every year.
Any other discussion or questions on six point one?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Colajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Item six point two and six point three, um, percent is our athletic report for September. And then our final camp and club worker, um, report.
Is there a motion to approve item six point two and six point three? So moved.
Douglas?
Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? Abstain.
Abstain.
Colajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay.
And item six point five is, um, we're seeking the approval of the contract for our reading coach, Ms. Ramona Anderson, for the school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Abstain.
Bab? Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Colajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I'll move to, uh, Mr. Robson, uh, Executive Director of Business and Facilities Operations.
Yes, Mr. Board President, members of the board. I would like to ask your approval to hire another custodian to fill positions that we need desperately.
Is there a motion to approve item seven point one?
So moved.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Colajie?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
All right, and I will now move into Board Members' Reports, Comments, Questions, Announcements, Future Considerations. Item eight point one, I believe, as Stacy brought this up during our last meeting, we need to appoint a delegate, an alternate delegate, uh, for the annual business meeting and the OSBA Delegate Assembly. It's gonna be held virtually this year on Thursday, October twenty ninth at six thirty PM. I believe this is the end of the last year.
I think it is.
Those are our representatives. I don't want any other takers. Anybody else?
It's personal.
How much does a peg?
Three.
Three.
It's virtual, huh? Oh, yeah. It is virtual this year, so. Okay, Lisa did it last year, Dan did it eighteen, and then I think I did it in seventeen and sixteen, so. Forty-six.
Yeah.
Stacy, so. I would do it again. I would often do it again if I have another commitment that I think, but for half the month, I will.
Was it in the evening?
It's at six thirty.
Oh, we have a career center board meeting, so Charles and I are out. Are you sure? I did look. I would do that.
Graciously, you're probably the alternate.
Hey, Dan. Please send me a reminder.
I'll do this over there, it's fine. If it comes to that, I'll, I'll miss my other commitment that night, but so appreciate you. Stay doing that for the team. Um, so now we can move to announcements and future considerations. So start with Mrs. Bab.
Um, I have first had a question. Are we gonna have a DPC committee this year? I had asked that during the committee part and I forgot.
What's a DPC?
District parent council.
Or we have like two representatives from each building? We can, we can come back to that next month.
It doesn't have.
Since you don't know what it is.
I, I can speak to it if you want. Yeah, so given the late start to the school year and just kind of getting people acclimated, um, we are gonna have one. We're gonna look at starting it, uh, within the second quarter, um, and get it going. It's just kind of delayed on this one because we require the principals to look at representatives from each school building. So anybody out there who wants to join, two parents from each school building, um, is usually what we follow. Uh, you serve a term that can be two years, and then after two years, you cycle into new ones. So, yeah, information will be coming out on that, um, within the coming weeks.
Great, great, okay. I think it's great to have parent rep, to, to the point of tonight, having parent representation. And I was part of as a parent before I was on the board, and I thought it was a great committee. Also, I was hopeful we were gonna be having that again. So thank you for that. Um, I wanna just show appreciation to Bronwyn Patterson, our district nurse. With, when you look at all of the COVID numbers, which to, um, Mr. Hook's number or report earlier, I follow a lot of different districts, and we are kind of trending the same as a lot of neighboring districts right now with our first couple of weeks in district, you know, in school. But what that puts on the people that are having to do the contact tracing is an enormous amount of stress. And, um, having the district nurse being the main person and then all the team around that person is just, I can't imagine what all that looks like to have to look at who all was sitting there and the measuring and all of that. So I just wanna show appreciation, to name her publicly and just show appreciation. And then any of the other staff nurses in the buildings that, um, have been, um, working alongside her. I know Mrs. Hester has also been a part of that, all of the administrators in the building. So that can't be an easy job, so I appreciate that. Just a couple more things. I'm hopeful that, um, you know, I see, I have a lot of friends on social media, and I see them posting pictures of their students, um, in the remote learning. And I really do think things are smoothing. Um, a lot of it has smoothed out just as we've moved ahead. But I'm hopeful that we can see some more pictures on our school social media just to, cuz I think that we wanna show that we're doing well in all the areas. And I do think that there's success, not just with showing our teachers, but also seeing the students because it's neat to see in their environment, whether it's in a basement or kitchen table or whatever. So that's just a request, if we can put more of our remote learners on, on the different social media means also. The last thing is, I think it's very clear from tonight that we have a lot of work to do around diversity and inclusion and equity in Springbrough. But I really, I don't feel that it is just the, the desire of the district to check a box, um, to say we have a committee in order to quiet people down. There's things, I think, that, um, brought us to the point that, um, that we knew there needed to be a deeper dive into what change looks like. Um, and I appreciate that you guys have taken the time out of your evening to come and speak up. And, um, I hope you will see this lived out over the next, however many months, years, that there is gonna be a change because I really, I don't know what it would be like. Because when I walk into Peacock, I'm the minority, and that's very different in Springbrough. Cuz that's not what is, what I typically feel like. So I don't know what that is typically like. And so I want our students to have, um, for us to do as much as we can, to make it as best of a place as possible for them to learn. But even more than that is we've got to get to these, these core issues of racism, of sexism, of bigotry. That is wrong. That is wrong, and that cannot be a part of Springbrough. And as a mom, as a community member, and as a board member, I'm committed to be part of that change.
Well, what is wrong is bullying for any reason. Think of bullying, in bullying somebody because of color, because of their gender, because of their sexual persuasion, because of, for whatever reason. It's, I mean, I, whether you're black or white, there's, there's no, there is, should be no tolerance in this school system or any school system. Nobody should write a report that says.
I feel less than you.
What was that?
She said, "I feel less than you."
Yeah. No. And that is, that is bullying at its finest. We have, we have had, I would have programmed here to speakers being brought in, talking about kindness, being kind, bullying, and, uh, it's, it's, it needs to be, there needs to be no tolerance for that. And, and I appreciate all of you coming. And while it was somewhat of a surprise, it was, it, it is good. And nobody up here is offended. We appreciate the confidence. It's, sometimes you, when you sit up here, you feel like you gotta do something now. And we can't, we can't. But we need a pump. We need a strategy. We need to make sure that every child that attends this school feels safe and, and doesn't feel discriminated against, so. That's, and, and there won't, you won't find a board member out here that's like. So thanks again. And what I think, the reason, one thing I was gonna talk about, but now I got all emotional. But we need, as a board, once again, start talking about finances. We, we are, and this is my, this is kind of my, we, we, we're, we're gonna run out of money. We are not, with COVID now adding to that, with the state now taking money away from us. We are, these children, these kids, these students deserve everything we can do for them, put the resources in front of them so they can go to Ohio State and, and, and be every, everything they can be. But we need money. I, we need to start talking about that. We need the facilities committee, we need the, the, uh, the levy committee, the, those people to not forget about us, to come back. We're, we're gonna need a levy committee. We're gonna need thirty, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars for a levy committee that can't come from the schools, can't come from the board. This community, this very community we're talking about and have all this work to do, you know, we gotta raise thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, in my opinion, to make, make sure that when we go to the voters, we can get a levy passed. And, um, and I know we, with COVID, everything, I don't know how these people do what, what they've all been doing. But, but that's another big, big thing. And that won't, and that takes months and months and months of planning. We, you got, you got next May and you got next November. I don't know how we're gonna get it all done, but we can. And I'll, you know, I'm, I'll go out and find key influencers that, where they can, they can maybe write a little bigger check than everybody else. But we, we need to, we need to get that started. Just another thing for you, Mr. President, put on your plate. Anyway, thanks, thanks for all the communication. Uh, I wanna thank everyone for the donations. And, um, you know, with what the discussion was tonight, uh, I've coached here over forty years, taught here thirty-five. When I found out about what happened, I, you know, I've had to deal with stuff over the years, but can't remember being this embarrassed, you know, for not only the football program, but the school as a whole. Wasn't aware of the petition. I will follow up and look at that because if it's true, I'm really pissed that I was not talked to about it before coming in here.
To that point, it's brand new, so please don't, it's not that someone didn't inform you. It popped up
When?
Like two hours before this meeting. So they just may not have had time to communicate that to you. So please don't be upset at anybody that they're just keeping you out of it. That's not what happens.
Doesn't make me feel that much better. Glad that, you know, it, it maybe was just recent, so. You know, I echo what everybody else says up here. I've, I've coached kids of color, you know, whether it be black, Asian, you know, Latino. And I can't remember, you know, the, you know, everybody that I've coached in that sense has, has gotten along. It, it just seems like it's been, been the last ten years or so that things have really changed in that respect. Cuz, you know, years I taught here, um, the number of minorities increased, but everybody seemed to get along, but you don't always realize what goes on behind the scenes, so. You know, I fully support, you know, getting this committee going and anything else that.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, first of all, thanks for the donations, um, you know, and thank you to everybody that stood up and spoke. I'm kind of afraid of public speaking, so I appreciate people coming and doing that because otherwise, you know, it wouldn't hear your voices. So thank you for that. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate, I really do believe that, you know, committee has such a kind of nasty connotation to it these days, but it's, it's, it's more than just people sitting around the table and, you know, paying lip service to this. I, you know, any, any real committee, there's action that follows, not just words and not just, okay, I'll see you in two weeks when we go on. So I, I, I personally believe, like Ms. Bab said, you know, I think everybody on this board believes it's a good first step, but it's not the only step. You know, and, and lastly, you know, I, I think, again, hearing the voices, hearing the personal stories, that certainly, um, Mr. Williams, you know, the, the quote you, he said was a friend's daughter. I mean, you know, that's, I have a daughter too, so. You know, what, what more can, can you add to that except that, you know, we need to, uh, I guess in my mind, you never get to that point where it's utopia, right? I mean, we're always gonna be working on something. It's just, can we make improvements and pass it off to the next person? And can they build that up and make improvements? I mean, we're all gonna be gone from this table at some point. To your point, I mean, there's gonna be new, new faces, you know, new makeup of this board, and it's always gonna be like that, and we just need to keep building on that. So, um, you know, that's, that's my commitment, um, to this district and this community is we'll, we'll make it a better place. And, um, I don't think somebody else will wanna take it up from there and go, um, you know, um. So, and then, you know, I guess one final thought, maybe this is a little, a little different, but, you know, I think, as I think back to when I was a, a child, um, you know, you did something incredibly stupid and hurtful. You know, the punitive stuff, the punishment was bad. But, you know, sometimes the biggest impact is when somebody pulls you aside and actually asks you, and somebody that you respect and has a conversation to say, why did this hurt? Or why was this wrong? And so, um, as we think about the, it was one person or maybe a couple of people that did this, I'm not quite sure, but then obviously the, the bigger, um, change, dot work thing. I mean, as much as there may be punishments attached to those things, you know, I would hope as a community, we don't dismiss those kids as lost or we can't change their minds or change their viewpoint. You know, I think that's the worst thing that we can do is villainize them to the point where it's like we just need to wipe our hands of them. I think this is, you know, I think, uh, President Obama once said, it's a teachable moment, right? Like, so let's do that as a community. You know, as much as they, they will have to, um, you know, pay the price for stupid, thoughtless actions, um, I firmly believe that people can recover from this and be better, better individuals because of it. So it's all said. Thanks.
Mr. Hook? Yeah, yeah, I've mentioned it before, uh, it's the, the challenge is going last. You guys say everything before it gets to me. But I would reiterate, um, you know, what has been said, um, by the, you know, my fellow board members and just extending my appreciation for everybody that took the time to come and share with us. Passion with which you shared, uh, you shared your personal experiences. You know, I can only imagine the difficulty that it takes up to, to get up here in front of people you don't know and to share that. So I do appreciate, um, that. And again, I think, I hope you've heard this evening, and, and there's a recognition that there's a lot of work to do.
and, and that there's a recognition that there's a lot of work to do, um, but I hope you also hear that there's a commitment, um, you know, behind it as well. And again, while we're not gonna solve everything here tonight, um, we recognize that this is a journey, and, and we're gonna continue to listen and grow as a school community, and I think, you know, I hope I speak for all of us, that, uh, we understand it's our obligation as a district to make sure that we're providing equity in education to every single one of our students. And again, I, I can't speak to previous boards or, or previous experiences people have, and we can only go forward from this point, and, um, again, I, I really just want to extend, you know, that I truly believe this board is committed to action, not, not purely, um, just lip service. And, uh, and so again, I, I, while I shared earlier how deeply disappointing it is to hear and, you know, learning about the change.org, um, you know, petition this evening, uh, you know, as well as some of the other experiences that our students have faced, uh, you know, and as disappointing as that is, I, I'm really encouraged by the passion of, for this room, and, and by the kind of board, and to the individuals that I've had the opportunity to speak with, um, you know, on these topics, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to, um, to addressing, uh, a lot of these issues that have been shared today, and really, um, you know, living out, making sure that we're living out, you know, that commitment of providing equity to our school and our students, and I do, and I recognize that we're not gonna, there's no other way to say that. But again, I, I hope you hear that, with that recognition that there is a commitment to action through this board, and I'm excited to go into a part of that, so, again, thank you for, for everybody for, for coming and sharing this evening. That's, I don't know, Mr. Hope, or is Stacy, if you have anything else to add?
Okay. Lost my agenda here. Item nine point one, is there a motion to, uh, but, discussion questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
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 All right, we're adjourned, thank you.